You went to Florida where it's warm, but I think we can all say that it's pretty warm here. By way of introduction, I want to read a brief statement that we read at the beginning of every meeting. The Board of Zoning Appeals is a group of seven of your neighbors or peers appointed by City Council to pass judgment on requests for variances and other matters that are brought before them. A variance is a relaxation of the literal provisions of the zoning ordinance. Petitioners must indicate a hardship or practical difficulty running with the land that would warrant the granting of the variance. The Board will hear items in the order that they appear on the agenda. When an item is called, the chairman will verify that the petitioner is present, and the city administration will summarize the facts of the case. The petitioner will then be given an opportunity to address the Board, to explain a justification for the action requested. After the petitioner makes their presentation and answers any questions that the Board may have, the chairman will open the public hearing. Any person wishing to speak on the request may be able to come forward and speak on the issue. Our open hearings are no different than what you might see at a council meeting. You just come forward, sign in, and you have time to speak. Comments should be kept as brief as possible and closely pertain to the matter under consideration, and only one person will be recognized at one time to speak. And at the conclusion of the public comments, I will close the public hearing. The zoning Board will discuss the matter in more detail. Upon that, if the item before the Board is passed by a minimum of four votes, the applicant will receive approval. If the request is not granted, though, the applicant has the right to appeal the Board's decision to the Oakland County Circuit Court. As I mentioned, my name is Alan Neal. And if -- Mr. Evans, could you please read the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bartnik?
Here.
Mr. Clark? Mr. Courtney?
Here.
Mr. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Neal?
Here.
Mr. Lambert?
Mr. Stratt?
Here.
Mr. Keltounis?
Here.
Mr. Bloomingdale?
Here.
Thank you. Before we get started, I want to also note that today we have both our alternate zoning Board members present, as we have had two absences. I'd like to note that the Board recently took on two alternate members to make sure we had a full Board to hear hearings, and this is the first month that we've had essentially a seven-person Board and two alternates. And it's good that we have them; otherwise, I think we'd have postponed these hearings. The first item on the agenda that I'd like to go over is approve the minutes from the February 21st, 2012 zoning Board of Appeals meeting. I would ask if there's any comments, questions, or corrections from the Board.
Move the approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, can you call the roll on approval of the minutes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Keltounis?
Yes.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Bloomingdale?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Bartnik?
Yes.
Thank you. In regards to the agenda before us tonight, I have one question or one item that I'd like to bring before the Board, and it regards item number four, Hearing of Cases. We have two items on the agenda tonight. Item A regards a variance request for Mader's West Garden Center, and item B regards a variance request for Continental Services on Stevenson Highway. Item number B has come before us in the past, and I know this is back before us for more It's my guess essentially that item B will take less time than item A. And in the interest of the parties that are here tonight, I'd like to request that we perhaps flip the two agenda items if no one at the Board has an objection or if neither of the petitioners have any issue.
Mr. Chairman?
May I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Courtney. Mr. Evans, do we need a roll call for that, or can we?
Oh, yeah, we should do a recall. Let's see, that was Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
And Mr. Courtney?
Yep.
Okay, I'll do a roll call then.
Thank you.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Bloomingdale?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Bartnik?
Yes.
Mr. Keltounis?
Yes.
Regarding the agenda for tonight, is there any additional modifications or questions from the Board? No? Okay. All right, we're going to go on to the Hearing of Cases. And with the change, we're going to go ahead with item 4B, variance request, being presented by Jim Barty of Continental Services for 700 Stevenson Highway. Is Mr. Barty here today?
Uh, Mark.
Okay. Please come forward, sir. Yes. Please come forward, sign in, and then state your name and...
Do you want our staff to...
Oh, yeah, I do. And I apologize for one thing, sir. I'm a fill-in tonight, too. But actually, Mr. Evans normally goes ahead and provides some information that you've presented, or your organization has presented. And you may stay present while he does that, or you can sit down. I'm sorry about that.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
But my name is Matt Hathorn. I'm with Rosetti Architects.
Okay. Wait, excuse me. Hold on for a minute, sir. Paul, can you go ahead and give us the briefing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry.
This property is located surrounded in red here on the east side of Stevenson, north of 14 Mile, more specifically at 700 Stevenson Highway. The property in question is a research center. The property to the south is one of our office zoning designations, and across the street on Stevenson is industrial business. The nature of today's request involves adding three accoutrements to the property between the existing front wall of the building and Stevenson Highway. That's also known as the front yard. Now, what they want to do is add a loading dock, a trash dumpster, an additional parking area in the front yard. Now, the zoning ordinance does not allow parking the trash dumpster area nor the loading dock in the front yard. I should note that the zoning ordinance is new from April of last year, and before that, parking was allowed in this front yard area that we see here. Now, the applicant was before the Board with a similar request in January of this year, and they were approved. However, the difference in this request and the other request is that they've moved the loading dock area and the dumpster to the south portion of the building as opposed to the north portion of the building. Also, the size of the loading dock appears to be reduced in size. Because the Board ruled on a specific plan at the January meeting, this change does necessitate additional Board action for them to proceed.
Thank you. Sir? Apologize about the confusion there. If you would like to make a presentation, provide any more detail on the change other than what we looked at two meetings ago, you know, feel free.
Well, I'd just like to state the purpose for the change. It was a difficulty with some of the existing structure of the building where we had previously located the loading dock. There's a distribution panel in the interior of the building that would cost approximately $100,000 to relocate. Also, by pushing the loading dock to the south, this allows us additional green space to the north, where previously our maneuvering lane was closer to the drive. We were, by pushing the loading dock more towards the south, we increased that green belt towards the drive.
Okay.
And the additional pavement to the west is primarily for maneuvering lane and not a parking area. It's possible during some late events, if there's some overflow with vehicles, that that might be used for parking, but that's not the plan.
Are there any questions for the applicant representative from the Board? Hearing none. Thank you. Well, okay. Paul, I have one question. From looking at the file paperwork, it looks like all the surrounding neighbors, again, had been notified of this change.
That is correct.
I know they had the previous, and then now, okay.
Yes.
From what I can see, the letters "support" and "comment" seem to date back to January. I haven't seen anything newer, let's say, that have been released since the mailing had been sent out.
I can verify.
Am I correct?
I believe we have received one public comment via email.
I just haven't seen anything in the file that opposes it from a neighbor.
No, there is nothing in the file that staffs received that is in opposition. We did receive one public comment via email that I believe you're holding in your hand.
Okay. Thank you. Bringing it back to the Board for discussion, does the Board have any questions, comments regarding this matter? Mr. Bartnik?
Mr. Evans actually had raised his hand. I'm sorry, he wanted to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not to interrupt, but we should have a public comment for anyone here in the audience.
I apologize. You're right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We'll get it right for the second gen item tonight. Dave makes it look so easy. Regarding those who are in the audience, public who are present, is there anyone who would like to speak on this issue? Okay. Hearing none, I'm going to bring it back before and close the public hearing segment, and now bring it back before the Board. And in regards to any comments or discussions for the Board, is there any comments to be made? Mr. Bartnik?
My question was, is it necessary for the petitioner to have requested the parking if the parking was in existence prior to the change in the ordinance?
Excellent question. The only portion of the parking that he does need a variance for is this cross-hatched area, the new portion. This existing parking and maneuvering area was already there, so they could keep that there. It's just this part here that they're adding on that they need the variance for.
Thank you. So what the proposal is, is to push the parking area a little bit further west than the existing parking lanes, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions? Mr. Stratt?
Yeah, I tried to think back. When we did approve this, we did we not ask for a berm to actually be all the way across the front in addition to landscaping? I haven't seen landscaping plans, so I don't know what's provided.
What I'm showing now on the overhead, Mr. Stratt, is the approved meeting minutes. At the top are the conditions, and at the bottom, we established a line to denote additional landscaping and berm as requested by the zoning Board.
Is that still in effect, is what I'm asking? I guess with this new plan, is that still going to take effect?
Well, here's their plan here.
It doesn't indicate anything to me. I mean, that green area could be anything. I mean, that doesn't tell me a...
That's what we know. Perhaps the applicant can provide us more information if the Board was...
Maybe we should. Yeah, I would have hoped that we would have got at least some additional information from what our last meeting that we had. I guess I should ask you that.
We do understand that that's still a requirement for this variance. However, it's still being developed, and I was a little bit concerned if I would have submitted something last month, and that was still not a final design, then I'd have to be here possibly again next month. But it is, there is a plan that's currently designed. It does, I mean, it fills up that entire berm from that point that's indicated on the graphic, all the way up and around as it's shown and required, and we're verifying that all the vegetation is for season. So we understand that it's still a requirement. We're still in the design mode where we have to review vegetation with the owner and finalize the plan.
If you had actually come before the planning commission, that would have been one of the requirements, that you furnished that information in advance, and I would think that you're asking for something here as a variance, and you're asking for something that is over and above what is really allowed. I would think that... I'm going to vote for it. I'm not, but I'm just forewarning you that in the next time you come before us, make sure you're prepared, especially since you've been already notified since last December, or January, I believe it was, that you came before us, my recollection. And I did ask specifically for that berm, and that was a very important issue for me.
And we do have...
Because in the wintertime, I don't know what kind of landscaping you're going to have, and in the wintertime, it could be all gone, but you're still going to be able to see the dumpster, and you're still going to be able to see the, you know, the trucks and the loading dock. I want to screen it.
Right.
That's what I'd like to see.
Right, and the owner also wants to screen it. And where the plan is currently, it's, well, I can only say this, but it's heavily vegetated, and I think one other person had a requirement that the berm undulated in plan and resection.
Correct.
Which we do have that, the contours establishing that undulation. So it's just not finalized, and I was a little bit concerned about presenting you something that...
I wish you would have had that, but you're exactly right. I don't want it to be like someone just unloaded a truckload of dirt up there. I mean, it has, should have some character to it, the annulation and actually a plant. Anyway, I'm just, I guess I'm, I didn't mean to be getting on your case, but I guess I am.
While you're present there, sir, I do have one question. Relative to the design, and this particular to the southwest corner of the building, and it shows where you show proposed landscaping that's going to be just south of the loading dock and the waste containment compactor, I know it says proposed landscaping. In the past, if you will, with the screen wall being further to the north or further to the rear...
Right.
Right there at the southwest corner of the building, and I'm talking about just the area runs right along the south edge of the loading dock, is it just envisioned to be trees, or is there another physical wall structure?
There has to be a guardrail at a certain point along the truck dock. So that material was going to be a guardrail, and the vegetation, the intent was the vegetation was to screen that.
Okay. Is there...
The depth of the truck well is only a little bit over two and a half feet.
Yeah.
So that guardrail would, is going to be, end up being rather short, maybe 15 feet long.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Courtney?
I'd like to make a motion which would be the previous motion with only these amendments in it.
Okay.
In other words, the berm undulating is still required and everything else.
Okay. Let me hold you off on that, just to make sure that we get any questions before the gentleman, and then we'll entertain that. While the gentleman's back up before us, is there any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Bartnik?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to echo what Mr. Stratt said, is the importance of that berm and the landscaping, because as you're driving along Stevenson Highway, there's fairly consistent height on the physical berm than with the trees and vegetation above that. So, you know, we were kind of very interested in what the petitioner had brought before us last time. So I think that if we do approve this, I don't think any intention is to change what was that part of it. That was pretty important to us. And I know you're standing in, I just would let me recognize that.
Any other questions for the applicant? No? Hearing none, thank you, sir. Thank you. All right, I'd like to bring this back to the Board. Mr. Courtney, you were beginning to discuss a possible motion?
Well, it would be the previous motion.
Okay.
Except with these changes. If you want, I can make it, I can read the whole thing. It's resolved to grant the variance as requested with the following conditions: that the existing berm be extended north and west as depicted on the attached drawing; that the new berm height and massing match that of the existing berm; that the new berm be undulated; that the new berm not be required where it will interfere with existing screening trees; that additional screening vegetation be installed in the front yard and on the berm; that the aforementioned vegetation species height and placement effectively screen the view of the new truck, of the trucks located in the front yard from Stevenson Highway; that the vegetation provide year-round screening.
Thank you. Is there a second for Mr. Courtney's motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bartnik. Is there any discussion on the proposed motion? Excuse me, Paul?
There is one additional condition on there, that the greenscape created would exceed the amount lost. I'm presuming you want that one in there, too, and for whatever reason you didn't read it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Well, regarding the, regarding Mr. Courtney's motion, is there any discussion from the No? Hearing none. Mr. Evans, can you go ahead and have a roll call for the motion?
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Bloomingdale?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Bartnik?
Yes.
Mr. Keltounis?
Yes.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes.
You have your variance. Thank you. Okay. Moving forward, item A, 4A, a variance request, and I apologize if I pronounce a name wrong, Gail Morrow of Mader's West Garden Center, LLC, located at 6550 through 6566 Coolidge Highway. Is Ms. Morrow here? Ms. Morrow? Well, I'm sorry, I don't want to make the same mistake, actually. We actually have to have a brief presentation from Mr. Evans, who will lay out the particulars of your proposed variance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This property is located on the east side of Coolidge Highway, south of West South Boulevard, in the red bordered area on the overhead. The property is zoned single-family residential. Most of the surrounding property is also zoned single-family residential, as indicated in yellow, with an environmental protection zone just northwest of this subject property. And I've enclosed a close-up of the 2010 aerials. Little history behind this property, city records indicate that the existing greenhouse on the property was built at least in 1940, possibly earlier. This matter was before the zoning Board of Appeals in 1975. What the matter before the Board of Appeals concerned was with in 1975 dealt with a non-conforming use. In other words, a use of the property that wasn't allowed in the zoning district that it was in at that time. Now, a common layman's term for that is grandfathered. And the subject matter of the 1975 hearing by the Board of Appeals was to determine just exactly what non-conforming uses were allowed on the property. And the Board indicated a number of non-conforming uses that would be allowed on the property. And I'm going to read them here for everyone here in the audience. The first use that the Board said was okay to occur on this property would be limited sale of potted plants and cut and potted flowers to retail and wholesale customers from inside the existing greenhouse building only. No storage or display or sale of any products is permitted outside of the greenhouse buildings. No signs are permitted indicating that any products are for sale at retail on the site. A small sign will be permitted indicating the name of the business on the site and the fact that the business deals in cut and potted flowers and plants. No landscaping-type materials are to be grown or healed in, in mulch, wood chips, or other materials on the site. No additional permanent or temporary greenhouses or other structures are permitted on the site, which would tend to expand or increase the non-conforming buildings and use in any way. No vehicle or truck in excess of 3/4-ton capacity shall be stored outside of a building on any portion of this site. The temporary greenhouse on the site is not a non-conforming use and is subject to annual renewal request and is subject to having the renewal denied by the Board at any renewal hearing. The attached sketch submitted by the petitioner is submitted as a representation by the petitioner of the approximate location of existing buildings and vehicular parking areas, and the parking area will not be expanded or increased in any way. Barriers of a permanent substantial material will be erected to prohibit parking on grassy areas. And the next overhead I'm going to show is the sketch that was provided, and on the left side of the sketch is Coolidge. We have a parking area here. This is the greenhouse. This square here to the south is the existing house. We have another existing house to the north. They indicate there's a storage shed and an additional parking area south of the storage shed. I do apologize for the lack of visual acuity, but this is the best the city has to show the record. This square here represents the reference temporary greenhouse. City records indicate that that greenhouse has been removed, and there has not been any request for a temporary variance. So to be clear, the city's view of this is that unless action is taken today to expand the degree of these uses, these are the only uses allowed on the property by the Board of Appeals 1975 order and interpretation. Now, moving on, what the applicant proposes to do is maintain the existing greenhouse with the inclusion of several structures, including pergolas, which are indicated here in various areas in purple, some outdoor display of items, some, a couple of greenhouses to be constructed in the back of the larger greenhouse. This is going to be a gazebo, and this is going to be a storage structure. And the applicant has provided this information, aerial overlay. And we have some samples of the indicative of the proposed outdoor pergolas that came with the application. So essentially, in order to have any of these outdoor uses and these additional structures, they would need to receive a variance from this Board here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. At this time, can we have the applicant come forward? Evening, ma'am. Just, I just need you to sign in, state your name, and feel free to make any additional comments or presentation that you would like. Upon the completion of your comments, the Board may have questions for you immediately or perhaps later.
Okay. My name is Gail Morrow, and I purchased the greenhouse property on Coolidge on January 6th. When I submitted the application to the city for the variance, I hadn't talked to the neighbors, but since that time, I've gone to some of the homes south side of the property. Some of the neighbors invited me in to see what the greenhouse would look like from their vantage point, and I learned a lot from the neighbors about how the previous owners conducted their business. We've been working really hard inside and outside, weather permitting, to clean up the property, and cleanup will continue and be ongoing for some time. My goal really simply was to make pretty gardens around the property, to clean up the land and to maintain the buildings. When I went to the city to ask them if I could construct wooden pergolas because they had metal pergolas, the city told me I should think about, you know, other things that I might consider to change on the property in the coming years and to put it on my application. So that's what I did. Some of the things that I'd like to do in the future was to have a shed on the property because I want to try to keep it as neat and clean, you know, with the items like rakes and shovels that you need to just maintain a yard. The previous owners had the metal pergolas. I thought they were nice, but I thought that wooden cedar arbors would be more attractive and consistent with the cedar front entrances of the greenhouse and to display plants because they had and hanging baskets. The other requests that I made were things that I wanted to do in the future that I thought maybe would help out, you know, the two greenhouses and what have you, but all of these things that I, they were future ideas and goals. I'm going to be a very good neighbor to these people. I know that the land has been mistreated by the previous owner. I personally have a very beautiful home. My property is very well maintained, and I intend to maintain the greenhouse property the same way. It's going to take some time for cleanup, but I think everybody can probably see that I am working very hard. We've had, you know, the winter, we just repurchased the property in January, we've had the winter. Some of the land is a lot of water on it. I can't get equipment in there to move out some of the debris and what have you, but I will be a very good neighbor, and really, some of these were future projects, you know, having a shed because I thought it'd be great to have, you know, the items, rakes and stuff all in one place, nice and neat.
Okay. I would like to...
Public hearing.
See, open up the issue to the Board for any questions for Ms. Morrow. Is there any questions from Board members? Mr. Bartnik?
Could Mr. Evans show the, it'd be easier, I think, for Mr. Evans to show the one or two drawings that the petitioner provided, and then also, right next to it or right after it, show the drawing from the 1975 or earlier.
Okay, yeah, that's the...
So this is 1975? So this is 1975?
Right.
And is there a storage shed on the property?
Yes.
Okay. And then there's a parking area?
Yes, delineated here and also here.
All right. And then there's a house on the north and south side of the property?
Right.
Okay, thank you. And then if you could compare the petitioners, please. All right, so the shed is in a different location, but there was a shed on the other?
Yep.
Drawing, okay, thank you.
That's correct.
Can I just say with regard to the shed?
Yes.
I put that there because that was something future. And it's not that I didn't give thought to it. I did give thought to it, and I said, you know, where could I locate it? I tried to locate it in the proximity of where it was before. I am entirely flexible. If the neighbors came together and said, you know what, I'd like the shed here, and everybody agreed on it, fine. If they wanted a certain size, I'm even fine with size. I'm perfectly fine with that. I can't do the shed initially. Those are my future things. I am so flexible because I want to make this land pretty. I want this to be a pretty place. I want people to be happy about it again. It's not in good condition in terms of the previous owner left it a mess. I mean, you know, he left garbage everywhere. We have picked up a lot of stuff. We're working hard to clean it up. I'm just very flexible.
Well, Mr., there's another member.
Mr. Courtney, you have a question?
Let's not talk about the future. Let's talk about currently. What do you want right now that is different than what has been approved?
I would like to make wooden pergolas in the front and have the display, the front and the sides. And if it's not the wooden pergolas, and if somebody finds that they're more attractive as the metal pergolas that the tenant previously had, I'm okay with that. I don't have to have anything else. I can work with the greenhouse the way that it is. It needs maintenance. I've been doing a lot of maintenance inside and out, and I will continue to work with it. The other stuff helps me and assists me so that it will make my job easier if I was to have, you know, the new preparation greenhouses. But for now, I would just really like the arbors and the display.
Okay, so the only thing that you're asking that's a change from what was previously approved is the wooden pergolas?
Correct. The previous owners had metal ones, and all I wanted to do was say, you know, can I do wooden ones?
Were the metal ones approved on their original plan?
On the 1975, it wasn't, no.
Okay. That's the only change you want, then, from what was originally approved?
That's all I can do now, yes.
Okay. I personally am only interested in doing, looking at a minor change and seeing how things go before I consider expanding beyond that. That's my personal viewpoint.
Mr. Bartnik, did you have a question?
I had a question. Did you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, did you contemplate any change in the parking areas?
At one time, I thought, well, maybe I should change the parking area, that it would be more, you know, nicer to have things a little bit closer and what have you. But it's not an issue, I don't think, in terms of, there's plenty of parking space where it is, and so I'm very happy with it.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any additional questions for the applicant? Mr. Stratt?
I just live down the street from there, and I frequently drive by. I noticed that on the northwest corner, there was a retention area or there was a display area that was recessed, and recently now, it seems like it's all crushed rocks or crushed stones that are put in there, or concrete, I think. That's what it is. Did you do that?
The previous owner left this, he left three sailboats sunk in there. He had poured in a bunch of stuff. We came in because there was a lot of water that was lying there. We put the concrete there just because we didn't want any small child or anyone to get sunk in the mud or whatever. That will be the, the concrete is to help with the drainage, so what we will be doing is taking and putting grass and a nice, you know, shrubberies and whatever. It's just that we haven't had the weather to be able to do all of that.
Yes, that is really unsightly.
It is. It is, I agree. And it's not pretty, but it will be.
Right.
It will be very pretty.
Like Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
He passed away, right? He died, and then there's somebody else took it over and really-
Well, since I took over the property, I've had a lot of people stop by and tell me the stories. And so I can only tell you what I've heard from people. Apparently, the man who did have the property was Mark Wilcox, and he did pass away very young. After he passed away, apparently, I don't know if some of his children tried to keep it going, when he didn't, the brother came in. When the brother came in, I guess he just, from all wild parties to everything that could go on, he did it. And he did not clean up the property, and so, and then eventually, it went up for sale by the estate because the children wanted their money.
Well, I watched it deteriorate, and I was not happy with it myself. And it's right across the street from the, what is it, the Nature Center?
Yes.
And it could have been really a nice-looking facility. It was at one time halfway decent, but never, to my mind, I don't think it was ever really real pretty.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it was not real attractive, I should say. But I think it could be a real gem if properly maintained. Now, I see the pictures that you talked about. I mean, you know, pictures are, you know, talk is cheap. Are you going to be doing that, or is that what you're going to do? How do we know that you're going to do what you say you're going to do?
Well, you know, you don't know me. I guess probably if you went and you saw my home, you would see that it's very pretty. It's probably very consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. I would have to say that, now, that's a sample of it, but the cedar ones would look like the ones that are up there, but I did not plan to put the brick around it. I guess I can give you my word that I would make them as pretty as I possibly could, you know.
Well, I'm not exactly saying you're going to do everything that's on that drawing, but at least the trellis are the character. Obviously, you can change the character. There are many different ways you can do that. The trellis would be an important part of, but I could see it being a real gem, but I could see it being disastrous. And you can see all the people that are in the audience. They're very concerned about it, as I am.
Well, after I visited the homes, I understood how much concern that they had because of what had gone on, from all the noise that was created, the dust, the debris, the everything. And I understand that. And that's not my intent. I, this is going to be a mom-and-pop place where, again, I maintain my home, I intend to maintain the land. It's not going to happen overnight, but I keep working every day to try to get things cleaned up.
Are you planning on living in the home that's on the south side?
No.
Okay. Who's going to maintain that?
I am going to maintain it. I have people to help me maintain both of the homes.
Are there additional questions from the board for the applicant? I have a few questions. You'd indicated that your initial activities are just to replace the display structures up front, the arbors and whatnot. It does not include the greenhouse that you've been dismantling? Just to make sure.
The greenhouse that was there, when I said dismantling, he left like a back wall, and I don't even know if we want to consider it a wall. It was all collapsed. It was junk. It was debris that we've already cleaned up.
Some of the additional two questions that I have really are kind of background questions, but I hope, I think, help provides us with some detail about what perhaps your capabilities are. I know they don't go specifically to zoning, but they speak a little bit to what Mr. Stratt's inquiries were. One question I would have is, have you ever operated a business like this? I'm not sure what your background might be.
No, I haven't. I have family members who have.
Okay. You mentioned this is a mom-and-pop business. As far as the size of your operation, I can tell you, I have no idea how many people you would need to run a business like this. I just lived nearby and see it. So in regards to the help that you have to maintain the home and the business, can you describe that in a little more detail?
It will be done by my husband, myself, and my two sons, and we will hire people to be able to help us. We're hoping that anywhere from six to, a total of six to seven people should be able to help, or we should be able to, once the land is cleaned up, because we're going to hire, we have hired people to help us to clean up, or not hired, but we've had people come in. Some of the stuff, I'm trying to see, like the trees that are on the back of the property, I'm hoping that someone will come in to take those trees and out of the property, and they can use them as firewood. I'm looking for, you know, people to help me in that way.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Stratt?
I just want to clarify your hardship. You're saying that you have a hardship if you do not have that shed, and it would be a hardship for you to continue your operation if you do not get it. Is that correct?
At this time, I don't have to have the shed, but the shed is something, the reason that I requested is I thought that I would take and house, you know, rakes, things like that, that will help me maintain the property from, you know, keeping the lawn mowed and different things like that.
So what I'm hearing you say is you could operate in accordance with the previous request that was granted to you? We would be legally, is that correct?
Yes, you can continue, yes.
Just based on, without having that shed? And that's the only thing that she's coming before us and wanting to have as a variance? Is that correct? May I to understand that?
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Wooden pergolas.
Mr. Chairman, may I intervene here for a minute just to-
Sure, Ms. Lancaster.
You're kind of on the right track, Mr. Stratt. First of all, this variance is no different than any other variance you grant. You've got to have your practical difficulties in your list of hardships, et cetera, that's our, the ordinance. Additionally, it's not as simple as presenting a site plan and saying, this is what we're going to give you. This is almost like a contract. First of all, to understand non-conforming use, which I know most of you do, this use does not belong in this zoning district. It's only there because it's been there prior to the adoption of a prior ordinance. That use can continue as it's set out in the 1975 instructions, but if you look again at that use, it's pretty limited. It says the sale of potted plants and cut and potted flowers only. Just tonight, she's mentioned a number of things that aren't in that list that you would have to ask her what those are, and based upon her site plan, to be able 20 years from now to determine what an arbor is, what this gazebo is, and what she can sell and where she can sell it, this is not going to do it for what you need to do.
Okay.
Additionally, it's my understanding that the 1975 plan, there was a temporary shed that's also listed on the 75 in the actual resolution. That's gone. And once, under the non-conforming statutes or ordinance, once that's gone, it can't be rebuilt unless this board chooses to build it. Her plan increases what was approved in 75. It doubles it. You have to determine whether or not, since, if you look at the way our ordinance reads, you do not continue a non-conforming use unless there are the hardships involved, which are in our ordinance. And you also have to make certain of what you're continuing. So you would literally have to go through this list and either modify it or change it, because this is what's binding her now, is this list of conditions. You'd have to decide whether or not you want to give her this shed, and if it's a substantial expansion of her non-conforming use. Courts have generally said you can't have a substantial expansion. It can't be significant because the idea is to get rid of the use, and no offense to the petitioner, this is the way the law works. If she comes in and she has things she wants to twink on the plan that don't interfere with the public, you can consider those things. If she has hardships, I understand she has a flood plain, that's something that you instructed the land, but you've got a lot of work to do from that particular previous grant of a non-conforming, an interpretation, that was an interpretation, to interpret what she's entitled to and what you want to give her, if anything, you have to go by your hardships. And we need something that a future panel can look at and say, no, we told you, you couldn't do that. To say you're going to sell garden equipment, what does that mean? So I just want to make sure the board is aware that there's still a lot of work to be done on this, and perhaps this is something that we need to table after you hear the public comments, so that the petitioner can submit a more detailed plan with a list of what it is actually, exactly it is. She has it on her list, but it's narrative, and it's not point-by-point. It might be easier for you to see what she wants. Otherwise, the only thing that she can do right now is what's on the 1975 plan. So I don't know if that's helpful, but there's a lot to be done still tonight in deciding. I don't even know what those yellow dots are on that plan, and I know, maybe I'm, my eyes aren't good enough to show me what that is, but how is somebody going to interpret that 20 years from now, or an arbor, or? So there is some work that has to be done. You have to put it in a motion, or you have to have something, for instance, the plan from last time, where you can visualize everything, and people can be bound by it. And it can't be a significant increase because the way our ordinance reads is, you can't enlarge a non-conforming use. You can if she meets variance request, and it's not substantial, it doesn't affect the neighbors and things like that. So if there's any questions of me, I'll be happy to answer them.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Ms. Lancaster. I appreciate your input. It's very timely and frankly, in a direction that I was thinking we were going to have to go. Before I make a couple of comments, I'd like to entertain Mr. Stratt and Mr. Courtney. Mr. Stratt?
Oh, you're done? Oh, okay.
No, I just wanted to make a comment that you heard what she outlined, all the items. You have to show a hardship. I mean, that's the key. We can only approve a hardship, and you have to show us what that hardship is and why that's a hardship to you. Otherwise, we can't approve it. I mean, you can have the greatest drawings, but it's the hardship that she was talking about that keeps, she's kept stressing. Thank you.
Mr. Courtney?
Yes. I wanted to indicate, I think the petitioner already said she can operate with what was approved in 75 and was asking only immediately for the wooden pergolas as the only expansion, none of the rest of that plan.
Well, that's-
But at the same time now, I'm saying 1975, but then I'm hearing some of that is no longer-
Well, as long-
No longer approved.
Right. And, Mr. Chair, as long as she understands that, that she can't have garden equipment, she can only have the sale of potted plants and cut and potted flowers, she can't store anything outside of the greenhouse or display for sale. So if she thinks she can be bound by that, and she's only asking for the whatever, the one shed or whatever, or, then that's different. But I think if you looked at the terms of this and what she presented, I'm hearing that she wants a lot more than what's on this list. And maybe I'm wrong. Maybe I misconstrued what's on her list.
Perhaps you ought to consider asking for a zoning change instead of a-
Okay. If we could at this time change it and say that the only thing that I would like the board to address are the arbors and the display on the outside. That's all I would like to consider at this time. I feel it would be a hardship if I didn't have some type of a display outside because the greenhouse is set back from the road to be able to show that you have beautiful hanging baskets, beautiful potted plants, and to just display those and show people that, hey, this greenhouse has something to offer, that it's very pretty. I think it would be a hardship if I couldn't show anything. If I, if I'm excluded from just having potted plants and just according to limited of sale potted plants and cut and potted flowers, I don't think that my business is going to completely survive if I can't display them and show them. I think in my- I think in my proposal, I said that I'd like to have, you know, garden tools, and I guess that's hard to say, because as you said, that garden tools could almost encompass anything. And I think I'm probably referring to garden tools, meaning small shovels, hand shovels, gloves, things like that, statues and ornaments, just to have something pretty to decorate the land, just to try to make the front appealing to people to want to come into my place. Why do you want to come into my place? If I can't show you something pretty outside, it's, why would you even want to come in? And I probably am going to decorate it as, the displays will be nice, the arbors will be nice, that someone would probably do in their yard as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Lancaster.
Again, I need to be the bearer of bad news, but case law says that increasing hours is not one of the things that you should consider. You can have an increase in business, but not an increase in business hours necessarily. And I think that what the petitioner perhaps doesn't understand is that it's not about increasing her business or making it look nice. From the city's position, this use doesn't belong there. She's there because it's been there for a long time, and she can continue it, that's her legal right. But to make it prettier or more convenient, it might be a wonderful thing for the neighborhood, and I'm sure everybody would prefer that, based upon the comments even she's said. But the problem becomes is that she has to justify it in terms of a hardship, not just that she needs to do these things to make her business better. That will not fly with the court. That's not one of the reasons you can consider a nonconforming variance.
I think, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I would say that my hardship would be, if you looked at the front of the building, and how much can I do to the front of the building, meaning the displays? If I can't display anything, how would anyone know that, you know, what, how, you know, that I have nice products? So I guess, I'm just maybe not quite entirely clear. I mean, you know, do you say that going and putting in planters, is that, is that not something that I can do according to the 75, you know, put that, can I not put planters and nothing, to make it look pretty? Like, your front yard, if you were in your front yard, wouldn't you put planters on your front porch to make it look pretty?
Ms. Morrow, I think what I'd like to do, and to help provide you with some guidance, and also help you, because I know right now, it may feel like we're kind of a hindrance to what you want to do. But what we're here for is to provide a way forward for both you as the property owner and the city to move forward, and also take into account your neighbors. It seems to me, and we ran into this situation before, where some of the terms that you have to apply, like the term hardship, as is defined by how we have to apply it, means different than perhaps what you might commonly use it for. And it's clear that you have a property in which there's 35-plus years of history since it was last before the zoning board. And it's not exactly a small site, and there's a lot of activity going on on it. And I know that you were given some advice for a good reason, to put down all the things you'd like to do over maybe a period of time. Whatever that period of time is, I don't know. But we have like a large pot of information, and a lot of it doesn't exactly fit right now, or even maybe need to be considered, because it's maybe years down the road. What you, what you might want to consider, and tonight, we're still going to have the public comment, period, because I think it's worthwhile for us and for you also to hear what your neighbors have to say. You may know it already, because I know you've met with them. But in the past, sometimes an applicant has gone forward and taken an item that's been, let's say, tabled, meaning we delay a final decision. And it gives you a chance to work with our staff, Mr. Evans and others, who can help you through the process of explaining exactly what you can do, can't do, and in your case, it's a little bit tricky, because you have this 1975 ruling, and you have a property that fits into a category of a nonconforming use. Instead of a lot of give and take and discussion of trying to sort through it tonight, I think in the end, we probably would not be able to come to a fair solution for you, and maybe for your neighbors. So having some time in order to, for example, maybe improve upon your drawings, define, for example, what you mean about items outside, whatever they might be, assigned, planning, et cetera, so that when it comes before the meeting, let's say at our next month's meeting, for example, it's very rock solid, you know exactly what the limits of the 1975 ruling was versus what you would like to do. And so that, and therefore, it's narrowed, it's specific, and so at the end of the day, everybody is aware of what you're getting or not getting. That's my suggestion. Now, that's just my opinion, it's not the opinion of the board, but it seems that right now, as the discussion is going forward, that it might be something for you to consider. Now, having said that, are there any additional questions or comments from the board for the applicant? Mr. Bartnik?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, my concern is a little, I think it's the same concern that's been expressed already, but it's from a different angle. And that is that, one of the reasons why we're here in granting variances, is that variances do run with the land. And as I see it, the record, we're kind of talking a little bit loosely about different facts involved, but as I look at it, the record goes back to before 1940, and that, it probably predates the existing ordinance. You have 72 years, over 72 years of usage as, I guess, a nursery business, a landscaping business. In 1975, the request was, the existing retail and wholesale nursery use has a legal nonconforming status, is what the request was. So I think we've, actually, I'm going to ask a different question, which is, does the petitioner even have to be here, asking for a variance if she is operating or takes the position that she's operating a retail and wholesale nursery use, or a greenhouse slash garden slash nursery slash forest slash landscape business that's been in existence since, in one way or another, since before 1940, which predates probably the existence of the municipality, and probably the municipality's zoning use? Because my concern is that she has vested rights as a property owner in the nonconforming usage. And I am looking at the limitations that were alleged in, or are set forth in 1975, and I quite frankly, don't see that any of the limitations have been violated, or are being violated, with a possible exception of micromanaging paragraph number one of the business, which is the sale of potted plants inside the buildings as opposed to outside the building. I mean, everything else, the way the wording of the paragraphs is set forth in those minutes from 1975, it indicates, for example, I'm not going to go through the different ones, I just lost the page, but I think that the language in that 1975 variance is sufficiently broad to include everything that's been going on in the business for the past 37 years, and possibly 72 years, if you go back to 1940. So my question is a little bit different. What is it that she even has to come before the board to request? Can an argument be made that, without even answering that question, is she permitted to open her business and continue to open it while the board considers this petition, if she does in fact ask the board to postpone it?
Yes, she's got a right to conduct the use, as indicated here in the 1975 interpretation, in accordance with these conditions and the map that was supplied.
Because, thank you, because I'm looking at the statute, which basically, if the use, it's section 125.3208, it basically says that if the use of a structure, et cetera, is lawful at the time of the enactment of the zoning ordinance, then that use may be continued, although the use does not conform to the zoning ordinance. And as I understand, section three and four of that ordinance, the remedy for the municipality or the citizens, if they're not happy with it, with the continued use, and this is being the most supportive of the property owner, I recognize. I want everybody to understand, I'm being a devil's advocate here, I'm not being an advocate for the petitioner. But the opposite viewpoint is that the remedy for the municipality is to actually seek to purchase the property of that private owner in order to eliminate the use. And that's something that the municipality would have to do probably at the prompting of the citizenry. So I throw that out on the table.
Ms. Lancaster, I do have a question for you, following up with Mr. Bartnik's comments, which are very good. I'm not, I'm not someone who has his background, his legal background, but the key point is that going back prior to the establishment of Troy as a municipality, which I think it does, does that, is that really the root of the issue and the question that we should answer first? And if so, my question is, where can we as a board get that answer? It seems to me it'd be a legal one, and we kind of have to rely on you.
My argument to the court would be that this is what the petitioner back in 75 asked for an interpretation of what he could do. This is what he got, and this is what binds the property owner today. It's a nonconforming use. The courts do not have always agreed that nonconforming uses should be done away with, that's the purpose of them, it's to, zoning is recognized. She is certainly allowed to continue the use, but the minute you start saying, her use is landscaping, that gives her infinite freedom to put up whatever buildings landscaping contain, to bring trucks on the property, we lose control of what the whole intent of nonconforming properties are, which is to restrict them until they go away, which is unfortunately the way that nonconforming uses work. She, we, she has property rights, we can't make her go away, but we can make her be bound to an interpretation from 1975. If she wants to clean it up, if she wants to keep, and I bet she could do a great job of keeping it within the bounds and cleaning it up, and I'm sure the neighbors will be satisfied. And the problem is, from a legal point of view, our ordinance and every case law is designed to get rid of nonconforming uses. So that's why we have this problem. As long as the use has hardships and can continue, where it doesn't affect the rest of the property owners in the area, you can make a variance to give her a variance and expand it. But you can't keep, you can't go against your own zoning ordinance, which now says this is residential, single family. That's what the intent of this is.
So to make sure that it's clear to me, the board and on the record, the line in the sand, so to speak, the time limit and the point where something was decided is 1975, it's not the start of the business operation.
I don't think we could predict what happened in 1940, I don't think we could go that far back.
Understood.
And, you know, so if somebody had a junkyard there before there was a landscaping business, because that means she can run a junkyard, it's too speculative, and I believe the courts would uphold the 1975 action of the then-Zoning Board of Appeals as saying, this is what you're bound by.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman? Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Bartnik, did you have a question, or Mr. Stratt?
Well, I was just going to say, right now, this is all legal. I don't know what's happening. I would think we just open a public hearing, I'd recommend that we open a public hearing, hear what the comments are, and let her postpone it. I'm all for postponing this and getting some legal counseling or understanding what's going on lately, because I'm confused, I mean, I'm just speaking for myself, based on what I'm hearing.
Ma'am, what I'd like, Ms. Morrow, what I'd like to do is, and as I understand it, and as part of my comments a few minutes ago about eventually tonight postponing and moving forward with a more concise plan of action, is that, along with that, I think some interpretation as to what the defining point in time, which I believe is going to be the 1975 zoning opinion, but it could change, but no matter what, everybody is well-served to be well-educated on the issue. And I think as part of that education, we should hear from the public. And I appreciate you being up for a lengthy period of time for these questions. And at this time, if you don't have any additional comments to make, I would like to open the public comment session, so that those who have been waiting patiently to talk can, unless you have an objection.
No, I don't. My last additional comment is, when I, you know, wrote this application, and I guess possibly when I wrote it and I said landscape business, I have no intention of having landscaping business. It was to include that if I, to sell small shrubs, something like that, but when we're talking about pavers and big equipment and things like that, I have no intentions at any time of doing anything that's like that on, so I do just want to say that, I just have no intentions whatsoever of operating a landscaping business. What I found out, what the owner did before, that's not my intent.
I understand.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Evans, since we have a fairly sizable number of individuals who want to speak, I don't know if it's wise to collect the list and put them in an order, or just, what is your suggestion in the past, when we've had a lot of?
People can line up, perhaps if there's a representative who indicates that they're speaking for an association or a group of people, maybe they could indicate that or come up first. There's a number of ways we can do it, maybe we could take an informal show of hands to see who wants to speak, and if there's someone representing the group, perhaps that person can go first, we can informally ask. I see, I see a hand up in the audience now.
Okay. In regards to all of you who have been present, does anybody represent a homeowners association or similar entity? Well, I would think we'd, sir, it would go ahead and use normal decorum, and please feel free to come forward. Please sign in and state your name, and feel free to pass along your comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
While the first participant is signing in, something we've done new with the board here is, on your computer desktop is a folder, which is labeled with this property address, and the city has received several electronic communications, and we've given to you, those to you in that format, in addition to the paperwork you've received tonight. So I just want to make that clear to the board members.
Right, just before you start, sir, we have received a number of written comments, a fairly lengthy presentation from a Dr. Graham Bush, a nearby resident, and we are aware, and I know all those packages were disseminated to the board in advance, but I don't know if some of the people are here also speaking in addition and provided the paperwork, but I would like to note for the record, yes, it is present. Sir?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Ihor Federovitch. I'm here with my mother, Oksana Federovitch, 1671 White Birch Court. I don't represent the homeowners association, but I have discussed this issue over days and weeks with many of our neighbors, all of whom I think have a lot to say about this. But I thought it would be helpful to at least get some of these sketches, which aren't very illuminating, off the screen and put up, ask Mr. Evans, if I may.
Sure.
Most certainly. Yes.
Now, before I get into that sketch, and I'll try to be brief, I applaud Ms. Morrow's vision, good intentions, and good neighborliness. But we're dealing with an extraordinarily mess, which maybe she doesn't even know how bad it is and what she could possibly do with it, especially with only five or six or seven people coming, instead of a bit of an army with a bunch of dump trucks, which also nobody wants anymore, because they had enough of it. Now, if you look at that sketch, that's not a sketch, that's an aerial. And you said that was 210?
That's correct.
Okay. That's already not representative, because what you have is a garbage dump much worse than what's shown there. Along the entire north boundary, you have the Sprague Drain, which used to be a nice clear creek, which is now backed up, full of garbage, and flooding the wetland conservation area to the north, all the trees, half of which have fallen over already, because their roots have rotted, standing water, looking like an oil well was gushing in from under it, filthy water, where the water needs to be tested for toxins now. Where it comes from could be upstream, but you don't know what they've been doing with this landfill, which is what it's turned into. Now, if you look to the east, you see- Now, if you look to the east, you see those like piers on the south end? Those are gigantic retainer walls, yes, thank you, made out of blocks twice as big as this. I don't know if they're two or three tons, they're humongous, you'll need gigantic cranes to move them, they're all filled with various kinds of gravel. Then, if you look further east, you see these kinds of piles of crud? Those are fifteen to twenty-foot-high mounds of stuff that was bulldozed into the back. Now, if you look at that supposedly clear cemented, well, airport runaway area, that's all covered with stumps, five times the size of this, with the entire root systems. So what you've had here for years is somebody doing landscaping work and bringing all their junk back with dump trucks and dumping it there. It's a colossal nightmare, it's a disaster, it's an ecological disaster. Another thing along the northern boundary, in that Sprague Creek, every single tree and bush has been cut down. And I implore each and every one of you to go on that property in your, at your earliest opportunity and take a walk all the way back, because you probably won't find anything like that except the recycling center in the city of Troy. Plus tubing, sheeting, plastic, boards, old scaffolds, it's a garbage dump. So you talked about hardships for Ms. Moore, probably a lot more than she even imagines. Now, I know the business of this meeting is not to discuss why this was allowed to happen for so many years, because when they cut down all of the trees and bushes, most of which fell into the creek, my late father called out the DNR, Department of Natural Resources, and state conservation officials, took reports, protested to the city, so did other neighbors, nothing was, nothing was done. I recall this being six, seven, eight years ago. Now it's a wasteland. I understand the procedural and legal reasons of discussing this play stands in the front. And thank you, Ms. Lancaster, for engaging on that issue, but that is just a sideshow of a sideshow, and it's so ridiculously irrelevant to the problems you have here. Really, please take a walk through it. And Mr. Bartnik, your interesting discourse about variances and rights running with the land never included creating a landfill in a zoning area, as Ms. Lance, Ms. Lancaster explained, wasn't even supposed to be used for the type of landscaping activities which involve breaking and cutting stone, often to eleven o'clock at night or midnight on Sundays, bulldozers back and forth, trucks, cranes, you can see the trucks parked there now. Look at the northern boundary, but look at the far east boundary. Well, that's nothing. There would be half a dozen cranes and bulldozers parked there. So what we have here is a bit of a dilemma, and I'd like to thank Mr. Evans for putting that on the board, and somebody download something how it looks now for the next time you want to look at it, and turn it over to the neighbors. Thank you very much for your attention.
Please come forward, ma'am. You would just state your name and just sign in.
I feel sorry for the lady because I'm sure she looks
Excuse me, ma'am.
A very nice lady, that she wants a nice business over there.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Pardon me?
Excuse me, ma'am, for the record, I just need you
My name is Oksana Federovitch.
Thank you.
My husband passed away this November, and we went through a lot during all this business over there. When we bought that lot in eighty-six, we dreamed of a very nice place to live in peace in nature. So we had a little forest in the back of the house, then they explained that there would be marshes, wetland, and I asked, "Well, how about that land over there?" Well, we see it's all grass, there is a greenhouse, and they, I said, "Well, is it going to be a business?" And they said, "No, it's a small business, they will just plant small bushes and flowers, and they be parking." I said, "Well, they be parking the next, in front of the greenhouse, towards Coolidge." That was all grass, beautiful land. Now it's a disaster. But we were going through a lot because across from us, there was a new development built. So there was a lot of dust and all that. But when that business starts having landscape business, I couldn't even sit on my porch, I had to go and shut the windows instead enjoying my view, because they were not only some, cutting some stones, mulches with some kind of chemicals that you couldn't breathe, and some kind of air brought some kind of dust that we had to repaint our stucco, which is white. So, and in the meantime, my husband was sick, and he said, "Oh, they probably just doing something temporarily, they're going to clean up." So we were flooding, suddenly, our little forest that we had in the back, and then our lawn, suddenly, there were no floods, and we had a lot of, a lot of water, and my husband complained to the air and all that. So we had few trees that their roots rotted, and one fell so bad that the whole neighborhood, right, you hear? Everybody thought the bomb fell or something. So the creek, also sometimes they cut the trees, they fell into the creek, nobody did anything, my husband complained. There are still some of those in the creek. But where is that beautiful grass that we were supposed to see from our windows? It's all I, when I, I saw only on your plans. And then we went yesterday with my son to take a look. It's all asphalted, there is no grass, many trucks were driving, summer parking in winter. Instead of looking at the beautiful nature, we had this nightmare that we went through. So I don't know what went wrong, but I guess you are the ones that should do something about it.
Thank you.
That's all I can say. But I feel sorry for the lady. She, I believe she wants to have a nice business, and I wish her good luck, but she also has a nice house, and she probably lives peacefully, so would like, I would like the same. That's why we bought the house over there. We didn't buy the house, we bought the lot in eighty-six, and we built the house over there. And it was beautiful, I used to walk in those, still the marshes and then extension in front of their homes, there was, there is still forest, but now the trees are all in water and that marsh, and they're falling. I used to walk, it was a little bit wet, and there were flowers, beautiful nature, and we have deer, different kind of animals, but it, it's something that I, I really can't believe that it could happen, something like that. So I don't, I don't understand how you can approve something like that, besides that, could you show that ten?
Uh.
Number ten in the file, you have that, they
Are you referring to attachment ten, ma'am?
And I would be looking at that structure, maybe they, maybe they be building tools, just like they started business and landscaping.
Mr. Evans, I think it's number twenty-three of the page.
Yeah, see, I would have to look at that, and then people walking and starting that, and wholesale, so that would be a deeper, like, like deeper place? I think you should think about it, how, how could that have happened? I'm just, see, I should look at that from my window? This is industrial area? Well, I don't know how you accepted something like that. Would anybody give me answer? They might be doing something with stills that we, all of us, instead of enjoying the nature, we probably would be breathing like I was breathing. They probably were not only mulch and wood chips they were cutting, and I smelled chemicals, so they probably soiled me with some kind of chemicals. It was terrible. I couldn't even many times sit with, with my husband on our back.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
And my husband complained, and nobody did anything. So and here I hear arguing that that nice business could exist, well, fine, but how about us, those people that were there first before? And there was business, but I saw the land that was grass, and now it's some kind of, in Detroit, some kind of neglected area.
Well, ma'am, I do appreciate your information and, and your opinion and, and thoughts that you provided. While we're working on clearly one narrow aspect of it, um, you know, speaking on behalf of the board and to a smaller degree the city, we do appreciate your comments, and hopefully as we move forward, we can improve this whole situation.
Yeah, and I hope you won't decide anything so disastrous that all of us, we won't accept anything like that, because we bought in goodwill, that's what the law said, that we obey the law, and I think everybody else should.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If, if I may, I just wanted to know what property address
Oh, I'm sorry.
That family is residing at, if it's north or south or west or east?
Understood.
What's the address?
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Bartnik's commented, followed something I was going to ask, is, could I see a show of hands of how many of you live north of the property versus south? North? Are the rest of you south? Okay. Just for our knowledge, is, is the majority of the issues more to the north or to the south, or you can't really say that?
South.
Okay, okay, okay. When
Anything new? Anything new they could add on?
Yes. Um, one thing, okay. If you could, sir, in addition to, when you provide your name, if you could indicate your address and whether you live north or south of the property. And in order to, not at all to dissuade anybody from having their chance to convey information, but if, as time goes on, you're beginning to provide us with similar information for the purposes of time for all of you who are here tonight, if you could keep it to new information, it'd be helpful. I think we're getting a very good idea of the conditions, but please go ahead, sir.
My name's Greg Bald, and I live at seventeen oh seven White Birch, which is north of the requested area.
Excuse me one moment. Paul, can you put up that one photo that shows the addresses and the
Yeah, it's up there. This one has it.
This one does?
Yes, and he's just northeast, right, right there, sir?
Yeah, right there.
Thank you.
So I'm directly north of the property, and I've been there twenty-five years, original owner, built the place, seen a lot of changes. My main concern, other than what's been already said, and I ditto what's been said, is the noise. And the other concern is that variances can be broken, as one of the aerial satellite images reflect, by the large trucks being on the property, complaints being made, and nothing's been done. So not to cite that the current owner would violate the variance, but the possibility is there, nothing to be done, big trucks, noise, and here we are again, back to where we are, where we were prior to the new owner. So that's my main concern. And with a follow-up question is, would we, as owner, homeowners, come to the board and complain if that were to occur? Because calling the police, calling the city, doesn't seem to work. So that's the other issues. I know maybe you can't answer that right now, but that's the concern. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, sir?
Oh, boy.
Sorry to sound repetitive, but if you could, please sign in and also state your name and where you live. And if you could, again, if there's key information, new information has not been said, please highlight that first.
Okay. So, good evening. My name is Graham Bush. I live at one six nine nine White Birch Court, and you are already received of most of the input I wanted to give. The reason for coming up here is, A, I wanted to show myself and do this in public forum; B, I wanted you guys to have the opportunity to ask me questions because I put through a substantial submission. From my perspective, my genuine intent was to lay out a series of data points and facts, facts about the loading of Coolidge Highway, facts about where the original nineteen seventy-five application was, in comparison with the use of the land was actually put to.
Land.
Sorry, I apologize.
Adjust the microphone if you'd like.
Thank you. Um, so I appreciate this is a lot of information to assimilate in a very short time, so I didn't really want to add to it in any substantial way, but I did want to offer myself up to questioning if necessary. I am an engineer by trade, my doctorate is, I'm a doctor of emissions engineering, so therefore I've been viewing this from a business case, practical engineering application, rather than, shall we say, an emotion.